The call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council at 6:50, oh, 7:01, according to my watch. Will the city recorder please take roll?
Counselor Gustafson?
Here.
Counselor President Rippey?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Absent.
Counselor Ewing?
Absent.
Me?
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Thanks. I was like, wait, I don't remember saying here. Thanks, Mariah.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tuolatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the council and audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, my nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Testing, testing. I brought my readers, but I don't know really how to use them, so I'm going to give it another go. I'm having a hard time seeing. I turned 45. And they went. It just went real, real quick. Okay. Proclamation. National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the Hispanic Heritage Week observance began in 1968 under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was expanded to Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan in 1988. And whereas the theme for 2024 National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated during September 15th to October 15th, is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together." The theme recognizes the contributions of Hispanic Americans to the economic, political, and social growth of the United States. And whereas the Hispanic community contributes to our prosperity and culture throughout the history of Forest Grove, the state of Oregon, and our country. And whereas the Hispanic community continues to be crucial to the vitality, hometown livability, and growth of our community. And whereas the Hispanic community, whose love of family, hard work, and community, has given Forest Grove spirit and diversity and enriched our community today. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2024, as National Historic, oops, National Hispanic Heritage Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Thank you. Our second proclamation is for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas the tradition of issuing a Constitution Week proclamation began in 1956, when President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed Proclamation 3151. And whereas Constitution Week is a reaffirmation of the constitutional idea that all people are created equal, and a time for the contemplation and commemoration of the historical events which resulted in the formation of our Constitution. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this monumentous document and its anniversary. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in Forest Grove, Oregon, Washington County, and urge all citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to commemorate the occasion. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to item B on the agenda, which is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to City Council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councilors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature, the raise hand option to be called on. Okay, so first up for public comment is Mr. Dale Feek. Can you please come up to the chair and the microphone in the front? Whenever you're ready, Mr. Feek.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, Madam Wenzel, President Timothy Rippey, and Counselor Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966. I gave you a document. You can follow along, or you can just listen. This is about the, at the Crane Data Center hearing before the Planning Commission, Brian Poole said that Rowan Green Data Center's purchase of land to build a data center, North McMinniman's Grand Lodge, could not be used as evidence during the Crane Data Center administration decision. So this mail is only about, this email is only about Rowan Green Data Center and Resolution 2023-37 at this evening's council meeting. After reading the two attachments, that you'll have to look at email, look them up, 92623, 42623, couldn't read the print, the Forest Grove's original request of Bonneville Power, and then amendment to that agreement dated April 25th, 2014, I have a better understanding of Rowan Green's decision to not pursue building a data center on their property. I received two attachments via a public records request to Myra Woods. Rowan Green never filled out a land use application because they were told that it would take five to 10 years to get the huge amount of 150 megawatts of power to their site in Forest Grove. That is a good, that is a good decision for the residents of Forest Grove, for them not to be, to get the power. Because Rowan Green would consume a huge amount of energy, electricity. And I looked it up. 150 megawatt equals 150 million watts. So 150 megawatts equals 150 million watts. 150 megawatts could, could power a very large metropolitan city, 5 million homes. I just Googled that on the way out, on the way in. They also consume a huge amount, a huge amount of water to cool the supercomputers and provide construction jobs for out-of-the-area tradesmen, but no real local jobs. And they don't really hire people. They need security people, need janitors, few people. But once it's built, they don't need, and also it's enterprise owned, enterprise zones, they don't, you get big tax breaks. You only need to increase one person per year to keep the tax breaks. And the school district gets only a little bit of money after the fourth and fifth year. It's a bad deal. As Chair of the City Sustainable Data Commission, I would be totally opposed to this because of energy use, water use. It's not good for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Mr. Ryan Sprout? Hopefully I didn't, I say I did not say your name right. I apologize. Sprat, maybe?
It's Sprat.
It's Brod.
You're not the first.
Well, that makes me feel bad.
Don't worry. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a lot of concerns about proposed Crane Data Center. I'm alarmed that an environmental impact study was not required or performed because of what I would consider a loophole in the zoning. So if it is built, we as a community will never know the true environmental cost. I feel like this entire proposal has been conceived in darkness without a town meeting. Community at large has not been made aware of the plans for this project or of its potential consequences. I heard the CEO of Crane say the data center would employ about 10 people once construction is finished. I learned that Crane will receive property tax exemptions for years because of its location in our enterprise zone. I learned that 100 megawatts of power is enough for thousands, perhaps tens of thousands of single-family homes. Google is all over the place here. So I really fail to see what benefits this quote "hyperscale" data center could bring to our small community. Our low utility rates, our quiet small-town atmosphere are some of our most valuable resources here in Forest Grove. I feel that Crane intends to exploit these resources for their own profit, and we will get very little in return. No tax revenue for years, a tallest structure in Washington County, and the promise of 10 jobs. I'm curious why, instead of negotiating with them, we plan to give so much away. If Crane were to pull out of this project, as the Rowan Data Center apparently has, I think Forest Grove would be just fine without it. I think a better industrial use of this land might be a semiconductor fabrication plant that would bring hundreds of good-paying jobs and help us break our dependence on other countries, these crucial devices. So I implore council, please say no to this proposed data center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dane Sauer?
Good evening, Council. My name is Dane Sauer. I live on 16th Place. I have a lot of concerns about Dana Centers just in general. I really strongly encourage that you guys look at not only just Forest Grove, but the impacts that it's done to places around our, our country itself. Doing just a quick search, about 30% of the data centers that have been built on the West Coast have really impacted the power grid for between Washington, Oregon, and part of California. So what pros, what cons are actually, are we going to get out of the data center? And that's my big question for you guys. Before you guys rule and keep moving forward with this, please look at the long-term effects. What's it going to do 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now? And we're not here, but maybe our kids, kids, or grandkids are here. So I do agree, there's probably better use that we could do probably with that, that land out there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. I have no others signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up that would like to give public comment at this point? Seeing none, I'm going to turn to my Zoom attendees. If anyone on Zoom would like to give public comment, could you please use the raise hand feature? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item C, which is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be, all be adopted with a single motion, without separate discussion. Counselors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve the items on the consent, consent agenda?
There's none.
There is none.
There is none. Okay, never mind.
Itemless items?
Sorry, I'm just following my agenda. My bad. My apologies. Okay, item D, additions or deletions?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any proposed by council? Seeing none, we are going to move on to item E, which is our presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presenter is Mr. Steve Krauscheid, the Director of Community Outreach and Engagement. And we're going to have a Forest Grove Primary Care update. Thank you. Yep, perfect spot. Oh, sorry. I didn't give good directions.
Good evening, Mayor Wenzel, City Councilors, City staff, and community members. I wanted to come tonight on behalf of Hillsborough Medical Center and provide an update on Forest Grove Primary Care, which is our local clinic. The items we're going to cover tonight is Community Health Improvement Plan, Hillsborough Medical Center update, Forest Grove Primary Care update, the old hospital building, and then we'll wrap up. If you're not aware, every nonprofit hospital is required to create what's called a Community Health Improvement Plan. So I just wanted to mention that as a part of the framework for our discussion tonight. And we work with 14 different organizations, including health departments, CCO insurers, and, and all other health systems in the Portland area. So each three years, we come up with what are the priority areas? So I just wanted to highlight those for you tonight. Access to care, mental health and substance abuse, chronic conditions and preventive health, and prenatal and parenting education. These are very important to the topic tonight because we'll be talking about access to care, particularly here in Forest Grove. First, a little bit about Hillsborough Medical Center, just to update you on how our organization is doing. As you know, we're affiliated with OHSU. We have been since 2015. However, we're still a private, independent, nonprofit hospital. They help us with our capital projects and our bottom line. We're still responsible for the overall care in the organization, and we do lease physicians from OHSU. So most of our physicians now are OHSU providers. We have 1,300 employees, over 600 physicians, and you see additional there. We're going to talk a little bit about the residency program tonight because, again, tied back to access to care, that's a critical part of what we're doing today. And I think it's important to know that 65% of our employees do live within 10 miles of Hillsborough Medical Center. So a lot of the Forest Grove community is represented in that. I wanted to share with you some statistics. Our hospital is about twice as busy as we were prior to the pandemic. There are many days where every hospital bed is full, and we have people waiting in the ER. We have never seen as high of ER numbers as we have in the last couple of years. Births are moving upward after, you may have heard, about a 20% decrease in births overall in the United States. So we're seeing that improving again. Additional surgeries, imaging procedures, hospitals are very busy places today. Couple other items that we participate in, you know, working with the school district, including the Forest Grove School District, to provide athletic trainers, and also working to have the students be able to job shadow and do career development. So part of the point, even though we're twice as busy as we used to be, you're hearing in the press a lot of information about healthcare and funding. Hospital beds throughout the Portland area are full. We used to go on divert when we couldn't take any more ER patients. And so then the ambulance system would take to the next nearest hospital. We don't do that anymore. We, patients literally stack up in emergency departments in the Portland metro area and across the country because of this growing emergency need. Why are emergency departments so full? Largely because there aren't enough primary care doctors to be following those patients. So people without doctors are ending up in the emergency department. We've also heard about supply shortages. Many of your own businesses were affected by that during the pandemic, and staff turnover. Our turnover was about twice during the pandemic what it would typically be. Those numbers have come down, but certainly staffing is much more costly today than it was in the past. Okay, I wanted to share with you, again, on the note of access. We started a residency program, actually during the pandemic. We just graduated our first class, and it's a three-year residency program. We take eight in primary care, family medicine. We take eight in internal medicine each year. So up here, you see those that are in the family medicine residency program. These are MDs who have already finished medical school, who are now finishing up their residency so that they can practice in the community. Aside from that, we, in this, this year alone, we've taken over 50 high school students for job shadows. 300 clinical students are doing rotations at the hospital. 89 new nurses are doing residencies with us. And I mentioned the 55 physician residents. So we have a lot to do. Quite frankly, we have a lot to do to catch up from the pandemic because many programs closed, including PCC lobotomy program, for example. They couldn't get into hospitals to do practicum. So there's a year or two of some programs that were completely closed. X-ray is another one. Just wanted to share with you some of the new physicians we have on board. I mentioned we have over 600 physicians. We have three new neurosurgeons, including one Dr. Josha Woodward, who just started, who is the only one in Oregon who is doing micro-neurosurgical procedures. Okay, it's all with a, it's called a stealth robot. He's the only one. The nearest other place would be University of Washington. So we really are bringing a lot of great services to our larger community. Orthopedics, very hard to find orthopedists these days. We're adding one in October. Neurology, we have new doctors in our neurology department. More important to Forest Grove, primary care is growing. And I'm very excited to tell you tonight that we have three new physicians coming to our clinic here, the primary care clinic. Sarah Archer, Erin Chambers, Marissa Wickerath. Two of them are from our residency program, in fact, and have done part of their residency at Forest Grove, so they know the patients. They already have a following and so on. Marissa is coming to us from University of Washington, a residency there. She will actually be providing OB services for our community. So very exciting. You think back to years ago, where the primary care doctors delivered us, took care of our siblings, our parents, our grandparents. That's what we're looking at, you know, that's what we're trying to create here with the family medicine residency. Forest Grove Primary Care, just a picture. And I think you're all familiar with where that is. So next slide will tell you that we are, for the first time, going to be fully staffed at that clinic. We're going to have nine providers. The three that are just starting that I just mentioned, one came in August, one comes this week, and then one comes the first week of October. So they're gearing up, but they're available to add patients to their waiting list as soon as they arrive. And we're working on that throughput. We also have four physician associates, if you're not aware, PAs. They've re-turned the name in the United States from physician assistant to physician associate. We also have a clinical pharmacist here in Forest Grove. So somebody can, that can effectively deal with patients who have very complex medical conditions and need to be followed by a clinical pharmacist to make sure that none of their medications are interacting. Behavioral health consultant. We all know what's going on in the area with behavioral health. And fortunately, Washington County will have a large treatment center in 2025. In the meantime, we've put a behaviorist in our clinic here in Forest Grove to work with patients on those issues that are really mental health-related. So when we're at full capacity with our nine providers, we, our goal is, and this is an OHSU goal, it's actually an Affordable Care Act goal, is that you make sure that every member of your community has a primary care provider. And I mentioned how short we are in the United States, but we're solving that problem here locally through our residency program. So our goal is to develop those relationships, to get more patients seeing the physician at whichever clinic they choose to go to. We do offer same-day appointments. You're familiar with immediate care. Once we have these doctors in place, so the middle of October, we will no longer be doing immediate care, but we will be doing walk-in patients for clinic patients. So that's a change that we'll be seeing in the near future. Best Med, for example, I know a lot of patients are receiving their urgent care services at Best Med. I did speak with Kathy, the manager there, and they have plenty of capacity on the weekends. So I think that's their specialty. They're experts at providing urgent care. We are not. We are experts at providing primary care services. And then a couple notes about our ISO of a hospital building that is, is on our property. Utility costs. We continue to heat the building, you know, just keep the lights on and so on. Forest Grove Fire has been involved on a number of occasions. We still have to, you know, license the building and make sure it's safe from a fire protection standpoint. Houseless individuals, you know, have been on the property. And so Forest Grove Police has helped with, with that as well. So we are ready, getting ready to demolish the old building. And that'll happen this fall and winter. So you'll see that happening. What are we going to do with the property? Our board has met and discussed, and we've talked to the city staff here as well, about the potential for a housing project. So we know we need more housing, especially affordable housing in the Forest Grove community. Senior housing, we all know we have a large per capita number of individuals who are elderly that live in the Forest Grove community. So what is it that would work for that property? So we have worked with two different agencies who are very interested in the property. And so we will look again at selling that after the building has been demolished. Couple of just drawings from the two agencies show you a little bit about what that could look like. On the right, it's probably easier to visualize because you see the Brookdale across the street. And then, you know, large, large numbers of properties. There are a lot of requirements as far as nonprofit housing or affordable housing versus market-rate housing, and what can go together on the same, in the same project or on the same lot. So those are items that we'll have to wander through. And that's my presentation tonight. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from council? Counselor President Rippey, I have a question. Did you go a few years ago, two years ago, at the LOC conference in Bend on the affordable housing tour? We went to a complex that had affordable housing for seniors on top and healthcare on bottom. Do you remember the name of that?
No, I don't, but I do remember that I learned about this organization, a community. It was a community-based collaborative organization for healthcare. And I was, I asked them at the time, well, I haven't heard about one of those in our area. Turns out that Virginia Garcia is that for our community. But I think what the mayor's referring to is there's, there was a housing development in Bend. It's a multi-story, I would say about four stories. The upper, the upper stories are all residents for 55 and older. And the bottom stories, though, are, there's a pharmacy, there's a primary care clinic, so that these, these seniors don't have to go anywhere. They just go downstairs to get their, their medical needs met, which was a model that was extremely successful for them. And if, and since we have the primary care facility there, right on that same block, you know, I think that's a good, it's a great idea to have those kinds of facilities, medical, healthcare facilities, close at hand for the seniors.
I'm going to, I'm going to go to, we're going to go LOCs in Bend this year as well. So I'm going to try to figure it out and report back to you. That just is a really good model of a, like a partnership and collaboration. But sorry. Any other questions?
I appreciate that input. One of the items we looked at is, we know we initially, originally, we know that we will at some point have to replace the clinic. And so wouldn't that be nice if we could somehow work that into residential as well?
That'd be so good.
Sounds like a great model.
Counsel President Rippey.
So one more question, and this comes from my, being a veteran. And the closest veteran to clinic is in Hillsborough. That's, for me, it's a half hour at least drive away to get there. I would prefer to have something locally. I know that the urgent care here, Best Med, is affiliated, or at least they're, they're in the network for the VA. So if I need urgent care, I can go there, and I don't have to worry about the cost because the VA will cover that. I'd love to have something like that with regard to primary care here in town so that the veterans in our community, and we have over 1,000 of them, would be able to get care here rather than going all the way into Hillsborough or even all the way into the VA Medical Center. I don't know what can be done about that, but it'd be nice if you guys were in the network.
Thank you. We will see, we can look into that. I appreciate the idea. I know we have done contracts with the VA before for MRIs, for GI procedures, and so on. Usually it's on a case-by-case basis because they're backlog, but I'm not sure about doing a primary care clinic.
Well, even, even things like imaging, for example, even the Hillsborough Clinic does not have imaging. You have to go all the way into the VA, and that's over an hour drive for us. And so things like that would be great to have out here. Thank you.
Good input.
Thank you. I think that's all we have. I don't see any other hands. Yeah.
Thank you for having me here this evening.
For coming. Have a nice night. Our second presentation tonight is a Pacific University update. Our presenter is Dr. Jennifer Coyle, who is the president of Pacific University. Thank you, Dr. Coyle.
Well, first of all, I'm going to say glasses are good.
Right?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Wenzel, and to our city councilors for inviting me to join you tonight and give you a brief update of some things that are happening at Pacific University. But first, I want to express my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you for your tremendous leadership and unwavering commitment that you demonstrate every day in our beloved city. Many of you know that I came to Forest Grove 35 years ago this fall and started as a student at Pacific University. Bought my first home in Forest Grove in 1993, and all three of my children learned to swim in the Forest Grove community pool. So I believe this is a beloved city, and I, we are really honored to be your neighbors. This month at Pacific University, we are kicking off our 175th anniversary as an institution. And as you know, the city did grow up around our early foundation. And we are really proud of our relationship with the city of Forest Grove. And, and we are really proud that we are Forest Grove's university. And I think we are an enduring cornerstone in the community, and I'll give you some signs of that. We're the only private four-year. We're the only private four-year university in Washington County, which is the economic hub of Oregon. We are one of the top employers here in Forest Grove. We now are at 750 full-time employees. And if we add in our part-time faculty, staff, and adjuncts, we are close to 1,000 employees at Pacific. And many of our faculty, our staff members, live in Forest Grove and are, and the neighboring communities. They shop here, they volunteer here, they raise their families, their kids learn to swim in the swimming pool like mine did. And of those, of our students at Pacific University this fall, we welcomed about 3,400. Two-thirds are in Forest Grove-based programs, and one-third are in the Hillsborough-based programs. The Oregon Alliance of Independent Colleges and Universities did an economic study last year, and we found that Oregon's 12 private colleges, Pacific University included, contributed about $3.5 billion to the state's economy. And the jobs that we support, the increased earnings of our alumni, and the earnings and spending of students and visitors who come to our campuses for all the reasons to be educated, to learn, to tour, to come back as alumni. For every dollar invested in Oregon's private colleges, students then have a return of $3.50 per dollar in lifetime earnings. And society gains nearly $7 per dollar invested in social savings. In more specific terms, though, our students and alumni are in the front lines of our community. The mass, the vast majority, we now have 34,000 alumni. The majority are employed in schools and healthcare systems across the United States, and many here in Washington County. There are teachers, there are social workers, there are speech-language pathologists in our schools. There are the optometrists, the physical therapists, the pharmacists, and the other healthcare providers, keeping our residents and our communities healthy. There are also public servants and community leaders. There are people like former U.S. Congressman Les Acoin, in 1969 graduated Pacific University, and we're proud to be honoring him and his leadership in Congress this month by dedicating one of our buildings in his name. It's the very first major event we have in our year-long anniversary celebration, and I invite you all to attend on September 27. There are also people like former long-term Forest Grove Mayor Pete Truax and Melens V. Campos, the youngest state senator in Oregon's history as a Pacific alumnus. But despite all of this positive impact we have in our communities, Pacific is, like other colleges, facing serious challenges. Every year, there are fewer students graduating from high school and heading to college. We heard a statistic earlier, about 20%. My Google search was about 15%, but I'll lean into the less, I hope. And in higher education, we are facing what we're calling the demographic cliff. It's projected that we will see a significant drop in the number of 18-year-olds nationwide from 2025 to 2029. And some projections say it's in our lifetime we won't see birth rates increase to where they were. And part of it is also an increasing and concerning public sentiment that devalues education for young people. The percentage of young adults who say a college degree is very important fell from 74% to 41% in the United States within the past decade. We know that education is critical for the well-being of students, for our communities as a whole. Students who earn a bachelor's degree, particularly at a liberal arts institution, on average, make at least 1 million more in their lifetimes than those with simply a high school diploma. A college education advances students' personal social mobility, but we are really proud of the ways that we transform their families' economic stability for generations to come. And our communities need educated people. There's a desperate need for teachers, mental health professionals, and healthcare providers. For researchers who fight cancer and think about climate change. For critical thinkers who are engaged voters, who are leaders in our civic systems and who are problem solvers. And at Pacific University, we remain committed to uplifting those who uphold others, like all of you do every day. We serve a very diverse student body that have a sense of purpose and a passion for giving back to our communities. In fact, this past year, we launched our new strategic plan that we're calling Our Pacific. And we're going to continue tackling the challenges ahead through a commitment to belonging, to access, and to innovation. About a third of our incoming undergraduates here in Forest Grove are the first in their families to attend college. About 61% are from non-white populations, and approximately 33% are Pell eligible. We are a federally designated Asian-American, Native Alaskan, Pacific Islander institution, and we're working towards designation as a Hispanic-serving institution. Our population of Hispanic identifying individuals was up to 18% in our first-year class last year, and we're still working on census data for this year. Many are from right here in Washington County, and we need to ensure that they have a safe and inclusive space where all of our students are able to pursue what they believe their purpose is. Among our priorities as an institution for creating those safe and inclusive spaces are plans to enhance the athletic and fitness spaces in the Stoller Athletic Center and to build a Native American longhouse on campus, both of which will serve not only our Pacific University students, but also the Forest Grove community. Last spring, we launched the Pacific Priority Program. This new program not only provides a four-year graduation guarantee for students right out of college and a two-year graduation guarantee for transfer students, but it also lets our incoming students save a seat in one of 11 of our graduate programs, which ensures that they know a Pacific education can and will get them where they want to go and reduce barriers along the way. We're constantly looking for new and innovative ways to serve our students and our community. This includes things like our resident teacher licensure program, which helps teachers on emergency licenses to get the training they need to be fully licensed when they're working in the local schools. We're piloting a new apprentice model of teaching. It includes launching online accelerated and part-time tracks in some of our graduate programs to make career prep more manageable for our students. Pharmacy is one example, and the new plans for our masters in social work. It also includes uplifting our business and nonprofit communities with our MBA and Master of Nonprofit Leadership programs, and helping uplift the workforce that makes our local economies work. As we celebrate our 175th anniversary, we're focused not only on celebrating our past, but also thinking about our future as a cornerstone in this community. And I'm often asked by community leaders and residents if they can do anything to support Forest Grove's university, and my answer is, we do need your help. We need you to help make sure that our students feel safe and welcomed, not only on our campus, but in the community. We need Forest Grove to be a place where students aren't treated as outsiders or visitors, but are important contributors to our vibrant community, because they are, and many choose to stay and make this their long-term home. We need you to continue to be our champions, not only of Pacific University, but of higher education. Partner with our programs, refer families and students to our admissions teams, and help us encountering the narrative that college doesn't pay off. Education is and always has been central to our democracy and our well-being in this country. And I invite you to, I'm a president, also, consider how you can support our students. Pacific is a nonprofit organization, and we do rely primarily on tuition to pay the faculty and staff who teach and support our students. Also to maintain our campus and create all of the innovation, innovative ideas that we've already talked about. We do rely on philanthropic support to offset tuition and provide students with access to education. Our discount rate at Pacific for undergraduate students is 62%. So what we see, you see as our sticker price is not what our students pay. We have, the majority of our students need financial aid. And your contributions make the difference for students who would not otherwise be able to attend college or pursue their dreams. And finally, I really want to invite you to come to campus as often as you can. We welcome our Forest Grove community to be part of the Pacific experience. Join us for boxer, cheering on our boxer sports teams. Enjoy our students' music, theater, and dance performances. I particularly love Sunday matinees in, in our theater. Join me there. We'd love to see you at Homecoming and Family Weekend next month. We brought Family Weekend back, and it will be paired with Homecoming, so it'll be a very vibrant weekend in our city. And Pacific's proud to be in the heart of Forest Grove for 175 years, so we really appreciate your support and the role that you all play in the partnership as we uplift our community together. With that, I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Coyle. Any questions for the president? I like using all of your titles. Like, sometimes I'm like, "Oh, thank you, Dr. President Coyle." President, Dr. Coyle, like all of them. Because I think, like, when we were at the convocation, I was thinking, all these students are in such good hands. And when I'm listening to you speak, I just feel this like immense pride, and then also gratitude for the work you've done for Pacific and this community. Also this year was the first Indigenous powwow. The Hawaiian Club's been doing the luau forever, the mobilization. I just really feel, under your leadership, you have brought a sense of community and partnership and cooperation and collaboration, and, you know, all these really cool programs for education-like sports leadership. There's just been a lot of out-of-the-box thinking and going back to relationships, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm grateful I get to work with you. And congratulations.
Mutual, everyone. I just have a comment. You talked about how tuition is, is down, or signups for, for school are down over the, did you say the past 10 years?
Well, Pacific peaked in 2018. We had 4,000 students, and this year we're, we're about 3,400, 3,457 is what our current, what we're tracking.
The projected.
So yes, we, we are down in enrollment in full-time equivalent and headcount of students.
I know when, when I went to school a million years ago, they really pushed college. They, they touched on going into the military or trade school, but really it was, you, you must go to college for this higher education. And my two older kids, who are now in their early 30s, they too were encouraged to go to college, where trade school wasn't really talked about a whole lot. They didn't really encourage that at the high school level, and they really pushed those kids to go to college. However, my younger two kids, who are in their early 20s, when they were graduating, the story changed. And it was encouraging trade schools and not going to college if you don't feel that you, you need the degree to perform the trade that you want to do, which surprised me. You know, as a parent, I'm sitting there listening to these meetings and the conversations, but that was a, an obvious change that had happened between the two generations of children that I raised. So I don't know if that's part of that change, amongst other things. Just a thought.
Yeah, we're, we're constantly talking about the value and the, the ability to, you know, cultivate and get, and provide spaces where people can think about solving big problems and, and gain confidence and communication skills so that, you know, we are letting students explore what their purpose is, but also giving them the skillset to be leaders eventually, and managers, and supervisors, and business owners. And so that, we take that very seriously.
Council President Rippey? I thought you had your hand right up. Any, okay. Saying no more questions. We're good.
Leaving me.
Thank you so much for coming. Our last presentation for the evening is the East Side Park update. Our presenter is Ann Lane, our Parks and Rec Coordinator. And I don't know Miguel's last name from Place, but he is going to come up and help her out, too.
Well, thank you for your time this evening, mayor and council. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you with an update on East Side Park. East Side Park is a small, half-acre neighborhood park located at 3705 19th Avenue. The project was identified both in the 2016 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan and on the capital improvement project list for fiscal year 2023, '24, and 2024, '25. The project is being paid for by Parks Systems Development Charges, or SDCs. And this is a very exciting project that the city should be very proud to provide for the community. We've made a commitment to enhance livability through access to play for all geographic areas within Forest Grove. And at this time, I'd like to introduce you to Miguel Camacho Cerna with Place.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you to the city council. It's great to be in front of you once again. We're very excited and happy with our, our work that we have continued to do in your community, and we're thrilled to continue to serve and come up with additions to the park system. I am a principal and landscape architect at Place. And just a quick side note, today I became an American citizen, so.
Oh, yay, Miguel. Congratulations.
I get to do this as, as my first official act, if you will, as a, as a more participating member of, of our state and our country. So we'll walk you through this presentation, and we look forward to your comments and feedback. As Ann mentioned, this part of the city was identified in the master plan that it was really lacking in opportunities for recreation for the communities on the east side. And Place was initially contracted to do a study of several potential sites. And we were very excited when in 2023, this site in 19th Avenue was selected. And, you know, we took a little bit of some of the work that we had done in terms of understanding the community, understanding how it was going to be a complement to the system of parks throughout the city, and understand the scale, understand what the needs were. In addition to that, we conducted a, the goal for this portion of the project was to create a concept design, but also, and more importantly, to do community engagement to allow the community to give us their feedback and their input on what specific needs they, they would need. So we had two community engagements. Unfortunately, the first one was very poorly attended. But what we established during that, that time was understanding the site, understanding existing relationships with buildings around it, the relationship to the street, the relationship to things in the neighborhood, and initial ideas, initial ideas for programming. For the second community engagement, we presented three initial concepts. And more than anything, what we wanted to show was that there are different ways of articulating these programs, and basically give something to the community to respond to in terms of, you know, we want more active play, we want more areas to sit, we want more gardens, we want more geared towards smaller children, or maybe a park that can be flexible, that can grow with your, with your families, and provide more adaptability as time moves on. And also opportunities for inspiration, for a little bit more of storytelling that could happen with these parks. One thing that we always try to relate with the community engagement is that, what are the stories that we can tell from the community so that these projects resonate and have an added layer of significance, that it's, it goes a little beyond practicalities or, or how things are arranged? And we try to inject it with a little bit of sense of place, and that is part of why, why we're called Place in, in our firm. And so we took inspiration from, in the first one, from agricultural fields, from quilts, from abstract art, and say, like, how can we arrange this in a more, let's say, rectilinear way? And try to organize the programs in a more deliberate way, where you have play on one side, and you have the seating or the adult areas on the other side, and creating structures to kind of arrange those spaces. Then we took inspiration from flows, either with rivers or watercourses, and also with abstract arts that are a little bit more flowing, and create a little bit more, more dynamics within the park. And how do we arrange maybe the play on one corner, and then kind of like create these articulations that are a little bit more dynamic? And then the last one, taking inspiration from nature once again, in terms of, you know, the rain, the ripples, the, you know, the patterns that we find in nature. And, you know, with this idea of, of these puddles or, or ripples, organizing the space once again, and trying to figure or explore different configurations for how we could arrange those elements. We had a much more successful second community engagement event. We were able to talk to the community. We had opportunities for them to provide comments, activities for children. We were able to get a sense of the scale of the space. We talked to a lot of the residents in the surrounding apartments. They voiced some concerns about some of the existing vegetation during the ice storms and wind storms that they were kind of in danger of damaging their buildings. And it was just a wonderful spring afternoon, and we got a lot of feedback. And the main thing, the takeaway for us was that those concepts were received positively. Apparently, people didn't like the rectilinear scheme so much. But a lot of the things that they were asking for were already being thought of or being provided in the designs. And we just went through and basically tried to organize that comment and, you know, address, what are the things that we're already addressing, what are the things that are easy to achieve, and what are the things that, you know, we would need to assess the viability? So after review with the park director and looking a little bit more at the trends that we got from the community engagement, we, all the things that you see in green on this slide basically were things that were very easy to implement or that were already included in the schematic designs. And then the red ones, you know, we kind of had to evaluate, you know, for example, the splash pad. Is that something that is suitable for a neighborhood-scale park? Is it going to attract too much traffic? Is it going to have impacts on, you know, traffic on the street that impacts safety and things like that? And then just certain more practicalities of like, you know, basketball hoops or dog areas that maybe were a little harder to implement, given the scale of the park. But then at the same time, there was a conversation about the fence, and that is one thing that we definitely refined a little bit more in terms of safety, and we can walk you through those refinements. So the two schemes that were refined was the flow concept. Basically, it was just to try to consolidate the play area a little bit more towards the back and have that variety of swings for different ages, a multi-activity play structure that included monkey bars, a slide, different climbing abilities for kids. And then on the northwest corner of the side, there's an existing willow that at some point fell, but it kept going. And so it created this very sculptural tree. That is a great opportunity for imaginative and nature play, and so we tried to consolidate more of that nature play on that corner. And then create this planter in the center around an existing tree that would be an opportunity for benches and caregivers to just monitor the children without being in the middle of the action, letting them kind of explore on their own, but like with supervision. And on the bottom of the drawing here, at the sidewalk, we're proposing decorative fence. Would be a four-foot-tall fence that kind of helps contain that area in addition to that buffer of planting. So that, you know, we don't have a lot of kids wanting to run into the street, that there will be deterrence to avoid that. And then the picnic areas on the left. And a little bit of visuals of what we feel like that scale of the existing trees will be and how things are arranged in section. And some opportunities, initial concepts for interpretive elements of imprinting on the concrete, either natural patterns, animals, maybe incorporate some sense of discovery in the sand play and the nature play with this idea of fossils or little things that they can dig and discover. And then with the ripples, similarly, we continue to refine a little bit on the relationships of how the play was organized. And in this case, we shifted the picnic areas or the picnic tables to the middle on the north side, again, just to have a little bit more of visibility of all the different activities on the park. This one included a lawn for a little bit more open play. But in terms of the play opportunities, they're very equivalent. The swings, the nature play, the different climbing opportunities, and then the nature play on the northwest corner. And so, you know, different, basically, things kind of move around on the two schemes, but, you know, the programs are the same. And in this case, for the interpretive elements, looking at, again, inspiration from nature, maybe opportunities for either murals or on the decorative fence, some patterns of cat tails, the idea of, you know, the fauna and then more like an educational aspect of it as well. And for both of the schemes, these are kind of like the main play features that we're thinking. Spinners, the climbing logs, the swings, these trampolines. And some precedent images for other projects where there's a more decorative fence that kind of adds a little bit of character, and that maybe there's an opportunity for engaging with a community artist or something to create a theme to the park. And with the planting, we're looking to make it very nature-based so that it reflects the seasons, it celebrates the flora of our region. And again, that's an educational component. A couple of the existing trees had to be removed. We had an arborist come and evaluate them, and some of them had either pests or they were structurally unsound. But that also created an opportunity with one of them that it could become also a carved sculpture that can add to that sense of place and storytelling. So, you know, we're looking at those opportunities as well. A couple of weeks ago, we were at the Parks and Recreational Commission, and we received some of their feedback in terms of, you know, maintenance and some concerns about, just, you know, things that we were already thinking about, like the fence and and they gave us some recommendations. And today, we're hoping that at the end of this presentation, we can get some of your feedback as well so that we can continue with developing schematic design documents and eventually the construction documents and try to implement this project for the community. Did I miss anything?
Thank you, Miguel. Thank you, Ann. Any questions or comments from the council? Council President Rippey?
Thank you again for the presentation. Thank you for the work you've done with regard to this. It's kind of exciting to see how we're moving forward with this whole project. As far as these two particular designs go, I, from my own perspective, I like the ripples more because you, for me, you end up having more defined areas. And I just think it looks better, both from a graphic perspective and then when you look at the street perspective, it gives me a better feeling for a welcoming space. The other thing I would suggest, and I know I noticed under there, there was a request by, or some people were suggesting that a dog park of some sort. And, you know, not related to this, but sort of related, a half a block away is another piece of property that's right there along 19th. That's city property. If you put a fence around that, you have a nice little dog park there. I think Ann knows where I'm talking about. So it's really convenient, real close by, and you could almost, at a very reasonable extra cost, kill two birds with one stone there. So, not that I'm against birds. Just think, some of these little things you say out of the top of your head, you know?
Counselor Gastsen.
I also like the ripples. At first, I wanted, I would like the flow, but for some reason, as we're talking, I like, I prefer the ripples, too, for some of the same reasons Counselor Rippey was mentioning. All of the designs are wonderful, by the way. My question, and maybe you addressed this and I missed it, but with the sand play area, do we have to worry about the community litter box in a situation like that?
Yeah, I mean, cats will be cats, I guess. There are a lot of stray cats. Have you had that problem in the past? It came up during the rec commission, too, in terms of, you know, it gets everywhere, we need to contain it, and as much as, it just becomes a maintenance thing. But we're, we've done it in the past, and it's successful. The children love it. It has that, you know, you dig and you find something, and it adds a lot. So it's something that we can evaluate, I guess, as we move forward in terms of.
Sure. This is a thought. That's all I have.
Thank you, Heather. I agree with the ripple concept. I have a question. Is there going to be access on the north side? So there's some apartment complexes in eighth, are the people going to be able to access that way?
So I've been in contact with Washington County Housing Authority. They're the owners of that property. We expressed interest in working with them to make that an opportunity for the residents in that complex. They are discussing that opportunity internally, and we are scheduled to revisit it. The two designs that are put forward in front of you tonight, allow that opportunity to happen or not? Depending on Washington County's position with this.
Thank you. And I think that Counsel President Rippey's idea about the dog park is ingenious. Because there is a lot, you know, that area of Forest Grove has developed into high density. And so there really, that would be a really good opportunity for a lot of people to be able to take their dogs out in a confined spot. And the reason that that piece of property wasn't an option for our park is because it was so close to 47. And there's some other things, but a dog park that's fenced. And it would be nice to have one on both sides of town. We have one on the west side, and that's what we're trying to do on the east side. So I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I love working with Place and another good, good project. Any other, okay, I think, do you need any, anything else from us, or?
I'd like to hear from Marshall and Martinez on if you like the ripple or the flow.
Sorry, I gave mine at the meeting, at the Parks and Rec meeting, ripple. I thought it was a really good flow to it, a flow.
Just making it a little confusing? Counselor Martinez?
I do like the ripple. Is there, oh, is there places where parents are going to be able to sit close to that other section?
And on which, on the ripple specifically? Yes. So similarly, on that circular planter around the existing tree, there would be benches. And right now, I think we're just showing that one towards the orange circle on the left. But there's more benches on the south and on the northeast corner. So yeah, this is kind of like feedwalls throughout.
Just so parents are close, can be closer to their kids and have a place to be for that.
I don't want to be close to my kid at all. I'm just kidding.
You know, and that's the balance, right? Like, we want to offer the option, but.
Depends on the day.
He's 13.
Oh, well.
Isn't there going to be picnic tables?
I'm thinking of little kids.
Yeah.
I believe we were talking about at the meeting, if it was going to be stationary picnic tables or picnic tables that would be.
Who knows where people would move them, though?
Our typical practice is to secure the picnic tables and benches in place because they do get drug around or walk away. So they would be affixed.
One other side note, if people ask about basketball courts or pickleball. So with the Forest Grove School District bond money, they, the district put an outdoor play area at the backside of Neil Armstrong, which is just a few blocks from that park. So there's lines for pickleball, so you can bring your own net. There's five basketball hoops. There's wall ball, four-square, but that's, and my understanding with those bond money dollars is the track, that outdoor space, those are available for community members once school is out. So we don't want people going during the school day, but after school on weekends, that's another option.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you.
One more thing I'd just like to add, that was actually, when you mentioned after school, that's one interesting thing about this neighborhood park scale that, you know, we think about it as a hangout for kids when they're out of school, right? But, you know, in the morning, maybe while the children are at school, maybe it's the young parents bringing their small children on a stroller or senior citizens coming and, you know, looking at nature or looking at the birds or hanging out with each other. So we hope that it's going to be kind of a, as it goes through the day, that it'll have that flexibility of use, that it'll change through the day and through the season. And that it truly kind of captures that richness of the community and that it's not just a hangout for teenagers or a place to just play chess or whatever. So we want it to be like that. So it's a great suggestions of opportunities for how they complement with other offerings in the neighborhood, and they can work together.
Great. Perfect. I'm so excited. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to item F on our agenda, which is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. I'm going to open the public hearing. The City Council passed a motion on August 26, continuing the public hearing for the ordinance number 2024-05 and advancing it to a second reading. If approved by the City Council, this ordinance will amend the city's municipal code to adopt limitations of liability for certain claims arising from the use of trails or structures within public easements and unimproved rights of way under O R S 105 dot 668. Are there any additional comments or evidence that staff would like to enter into the record?
Whoops, there are none. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Does the council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now call in persons who signed up to comment on the ordinance. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents? I don't have any signed up, so I'm just going to ask the audience. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Are there anyone who would like to offer other comments? Okay, seeing none, the hearing is now closed. Are there any additional questions or further discussion from council on the motion before we proceed? Oops, there's a, I need a motion. Is there a motion on the floor?
I have one comment.
Let's do a motion and then, it usually goes motion and then discussion. It's just backwards on my.
We already made motions, but, okay.
For the second, we do a motion for the second reading, too.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-05.
My second.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2024-05 was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Are there any additional questions or further discussion from the council on the motion before we proceed with the roll call vote? Council President Rippey?
I'd like to suggest that since this is important to our city, that we send our resolution to our state representative and state senator under letterhead, signed by the mayor, making sure that they understand our council, you know, feels this is important.
Is there consensus? Do we need any further thing from that or just consensus to doing that?
No, just forwarding the existing ordinance if it passes. So just a consensus would be fine.
Okay. Is there consensus to?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Okay. Will the city, or will the city manager please read ordinance 2024-05 by title only?
Ordinance 2024-05, amending the city of Forest Grove's municipal code to adopt limitation of liability for certain claims arising from the use of trails or structures within public easements and unimproved rights of way under Oregon Revised Statute 105 point 668.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Gastsen?
Yes.
Counselor President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, the vote is five to zero. Ordinance number 2024-25 or 05 is adopted by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you. We are now going to move on to item F2, which is Resolution 2024-37. And our staff presenter is Mr. Downey.
Good evening again. I'm going to just, this is a very short staff report, so I'm just going to read the staff report for you. In preparation for Rowan Green Data LLC, Rowan, to potentially build a data center, Rowan needed BPA to study how to expand their distribution system to get additional power to Forest Grove. BPA required a $6 million deposit for the necessary planning and engineering work. Because the city is BPA's customer, the city contracted with BPA, paid the $6 million deposit to the BPA after the city received the $6 million from Rowan. This expenditure was authorized in the fiscal year 2324 budget via council approval of Resolution 23-10. The agreement with BPA allowed the city to cancel the contract with a refund of any unspent funds at the time of cancellation. Rowan notified the city to cancel the contract, and in turn, the city notified BPA to cancel the contract. BPA refunded the unspent balance of approximately $5,971,000 to the city. B P A refunded the unspent balance of approximately $5,971,000 to the city. Council needs to appropriate the funds in the city's budget so the city has the budget authority to pay these funds back to Rowan, which the city is obligated by contract to refund these monies in full to Rowan since Rowan paid the money. I'll take any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? I don't see any. Seeing no questions. Is there a motion from council?
I move that we approve Resolution 2024 dash 37.
Second.
Resolution 2024 dash 37 was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Counsel, Counselor Guss. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none. Will, does the city manager, do you have to read the title, this by title only, Jesse? No, can you read this by title only, please?
Resolution 2024 dash 37, appropriating expenditure of funds in the Light and Power Department for payment of a refund from the Bonneville Power Administration to Rowan Green Data LLC for preliminary engineering activities for a proposed data center.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Guss.
Yes.
Counsel President Rippey.
Yes.
Counselor Martinez.
Yes.
Counselor Marshall. Mayor Wenzel.
Yes, Resolution 2024 dash 37 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of five to zero. Moving on to item F3, Resolution 2024 dash 38. And presenting is staff, city manager Jesse Vanderzaden. This is authorizing the city manager to submit a legislative priority ballot to the League of Oregon Cities, L O Z.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a resolution that would essentially just list out what the top five legislative priorities are from the city council and these would be sent to the League of Oregon Cities to amalgamate with the other municipalities and in doing so, come up with the L O C legislative priorities for the next biennium, 2025 dash 26. There was a work session that was held on this at the last meeting. And the consensus priorities that the council came up with were infrastructure funding, cybersecurity and privacy, shift from a gas tax to a road user fee, behavioral health enhancements and the 2025 transportation package. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks. Any questions for Jesse?
Nope, no question, but I do have another suggestion.
Discussion, okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
So I move that we approve Resolution 2024 dash 38.
Second.
Okay, Resolution 2024 dash 38 was moved by Counselor Martinez and seconded by Counselor Marshall. And now we will open the topic for discussion. Council President Rippey.
So every year, every other year, we do this and we send this, our, our vote into L O C, which as the city manager mentioned, gets included with everybody else's throughout the entire state. But again, I would suggest, again, trying to make an emphasis to our own representatives about our own voice. I would recommend this resolution also be sent to Representative McLean and Senator Solman so that they know what our top priorities are, even though they're going to hear from the, from the L O C later. So I would suggest we also send this one.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
I agree.
Any other thoughts?
And I like this extra communication. I, I think it's useful.
There's consensus for that. Any other discussion? Will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution 2024 dash 38, authorizing the city manager to submit a legislative priorities ballot to the League of Oregon Cities.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say aye. Hearing none. Resolution 2024 dash 38 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of five to zero. We are now moving on to item G, which is council communications. We will start with our council president, Tim Rippey.
Thank you. The only thing I have, a couple of things is the chamber is hosting the corn roast on Saturday, the 21st. From, I think it's from 11 to 4. So always a great event, community event, and I highly recommend everybody participate. The Valley Art Sidewalk Talk Art Festival is also the same weekend. If you want to participate in that. And E D C and the TV Highway Steering Committee meetings are this coming Thursday, so I don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let me, Counselor Guss.
Yep, I don't really have anything to report, but just a reminder that the 9/11 ceremony is at 9:00 a.m. on September 11th. And also the Seven Generations Celebration, the sculpture by the library, that is at 4:00 p.m. on September 11th as well. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Marshall.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Martinez.
Okay, so rural fire district, end of fire season's concern. We've got another month and a half and everything's pretty dry. We did have some fires in the watershed about a month ago when we had lightning strikes up there, but the forestry was able to contain and extinguish those. And then two offers, conditional offers have been sent out to two potential employees to replace two that went to Portland Fire Station. And then for Sister City, everything's coming together. There've been some things that came up that we weren't able to do. Or, for instance, the trick or treat, I guess they've changed it to just on the weekends. And I know at one time it used to be during the week. So just things like that, we've had to change itinerary for students and adults. It's coming right along. Pretty exciting.
Can that, the dates?
Yes, yes, I can. Just so you know, it's October, let's see, 29th is when they arrive. The mayor and his assistant leave on, I think it's the morning of the 31st at 4:00 a.m. And then his.
Their flight leaves at 4:00?
Leaves 4:30 a.m. that.
From PDX?
Well, maybe they have to leave here, but I was thinking their flights were leaving at 4:30 in the morning. Yeah, from PDX. And then the students leave at 4:00 a.m. on Saturday.
We're asking home stay families, including me, to get up at three.
Yeah, to get their students and, yeah, they were, it was conveyed to them that that's really not a good time for us here and that in the future.
Just to ask families, friends a lot. We have to work that day with like.
Right.
On Halloween with 13 year olds and 14s.
Okay.
Counselor Martinez. So will they be participating in trick or treat, the merchants?
No, because that's on the 26th before they even arrive.
Okay, for some reason I thought you said they were arriving earlier and that's too bad.
Yeah, no, unfortunately not. So there, yeah, like I said, there's been a few things that we've had to reschedule. I was hoping they'd be able to go out to the Fern Hill, the wetlands and the watershed, but apparently we need to know what the weather's like at that point because it can, with a lot of rain, be kind of treacherous. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to turn it over to Jesse for our city manager report.
Thank you, Mary. Just have a couple of things on the, piggybacking a little bit on what Counselor Martinez was mentioning regarding the watershed spot fires, we do actually have a presentation prepared on that. We'll bring that in front of the council. Also, we'll bring a watershed annual update to the council as well simultaneous with that. Don't have an exact date on it, it might be next meeting, but we'll, we'll see. Two other things, the east restroom in the library will, is scheduled to be done this week. So, and they're also scheduled to start on the teen partition this week. Once the east restroom in the library is complete, then the west restroom, west restroom will close down and they will commence construction on that. As the council may recall, those are both American Rescue Plan projects that we're implementing now. Also, the U.S. Department of Transportation announced that it will be awarding kind of the Oregon Northern Willamette Valley, it will be awarding a $15 million grant for EV charging infrastructure. Forest Grove is part of that kind of consortium of municipalities. The city of Tualatin is actually administering the grant on behalf of all the municipalities, but Forest Grove is one of them. It also includes Beaverton, Gresham, Hillsborough, King City, Lake Oswego, McMinnville, Milwaukee, Newburgh, Oregon City, Portland, Salem, Sherwood and Tigard. So it's pretty expansive, but out of those 50 municipalities, it's $15 million. And so Keith Warman, Light and Power Director, has been in contact with the city of Tualatin and more news on that to follow, but it is for level two network chargers to be installed in and around these various communities and cities. So with that, that's all I have, except for the L O C Annual Conference is coming up, October 17th through the 19th. Mayor, you mentioned that earlier, so.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, so mayor's report. Last Wednesday on September 4th, Congresswoman Bonamichi visited Neil Armstrong Middle School and waved goodbye to students on their first day of school and then also presented myself and some city representatives, the check for $850,000. Just a friendly reminder that those funds are for our East Forest Grove TV Highway Safety Improvement Plan. So staff is working with ODOT to coordinate how we can get the most out of that funding. That's a huge project that we can scaffold and scale, but U Street intersection would be addressed at some point during the safety plan. Continuation of sidewalks, a mid-block crossing between Quince and Mountain View. So that was really, really exciting and we're just going to keep trying to address, you know, and in addition to that, on Mountain View, we applied for the Safe Routes to School Grant for, to make sidewalks go on Mountain View. So between, hopefully our safety improvement plans on TV Highway, the park, Mountain View, Safe Routes to School, I just really feel like staff and council has done a lot of work towards the east side of Forest Grove and I think we're going to start to see some of those improvements made. So that's real, real exciting. After school that day, I went to the farmer's market and promoted our 2040 visioning plan and survey. So again, just a friendly reminder that that survey is open until the end of September. We want to try to have at least 2,000 people participate. We're a little bit over 1,000. So, you know, your networks of how you see people, if you can have that QR code out, encourage people to complete that survey because that will help us make that vision plan. That'd be great. Saturday, I attended Juan Carlos Gonzalez, Metro Counselor Gonzalez's TV Highway cleanup and that was from Walmart in Cornelius to Mountain View in Forest Grove. So that east side Forest Grove, west side Cornelius. I also attended the Rob Drake ribbon cutting for the STEM Learning Center at the Cornelius Library. And the Rotary's, the afternoon Rotary celebrated their 100 year birthday. Coming up, we have, as Council President Rippey said, corn roast is coming up the following week. On September 28th is the annual town hall meeting from 10 to 12 in this location. The topic is transportation. That's hosted by our community for, wait, now it's C C E, Committee for Community Engagement. After that is Oktoberfest. At both Corn Roasts and Oktoberfest, I'll be working with city staff at booths to try to promote the survey as well. Oh, you should have received an invitation from the library because they're doing their gathering of the groups October 6th. And it'd be really great if more council showed up. Last year, they hosted and I was the only person that attended from council. So if you can make that, it should have been an Evite, so you might not have recognized it, but the Chair of the Library Commission sent that out last night. Oh, yeah, L O C, I'm like, want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything. Yeah, I think that's what I have the next two weeks. Oh, one other question I had, I'm going to be at, Council President Rippey, I'm going to be attending the NLC conference in November. Can you run November 12th meeting? Can you fill in for me and run that? I think, I think the conference starts on the 12th, but the 11th is a Monday, so we're going to move our council meeting to the 12th, so I will be flying there. That'd be amazing if you could do that. Perfect, cool. Oh, okay, so that's all I have. Thank you very much and I adjourn this meeting. Perfect.